He said, "You're ready to give your hand up."
Yes.
And he's going to get the hand up. I'm telling you Tina, it's been a long time.
I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisor meeting Monday, October 25th, 2021 to order. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pyho is not here. Ms. Kircher?
Yeah.
Mr. Staples?
Here.
Mr. Spees?
Here.
And Mr. Gaultier is here. Just like to take a moment to welcome Mr. Staples to the board. This is his first meeting, so it's good to have you here.
Thank you.
Announcements, we had two executive sessions. The first on October 20th, 2021, which involved personnel matter. The second on October 25th, 2021, this evening, dealing with personnel and litigation. Next, we have public comments. And this is for agenda items. First, David Hughes.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about an item that was posted in the check register to clean up the ballroom for $727.65. I think this was connected with the unauthorized RCC wedding reception. And I'd like someone to verify that later on, if not right now. But that reception, which you claim was held without your knowledge, without the township's knowledge, is just unbelievable that something could go on where none of you know about it. That's what you're supposed to do, manage our assets. And someone at 2:30 in the morning in the afternoon could put on a wedding reception and no one knows about it? How can that happen? I don't think those guys did it on their own volition. I think somebody on this board, maybe one or two people, gave them permission to do that. And you guys are throwing them under the bus. I mean, we're talking about grand theft here. We're talking about the use of township property for personal use. That's going to involve a Ethics Act violation. And if it comes out that you guys support this, you're all going to go up the river. Okay? You guys look good and great in pinstripes. So, and would these two guys really do something without your okay? And the entire RCC staff, I went up there over seven days and asked them if they knew anything about it. They were told, they had to be told not to mention it because they all said, "We don't know anything about it." Well, where's Sandrider? Oh, he'll come in later today. They lied to me. You guys told them to lie to me or to anyone that would answer that, ask that question. So, the chief, he doesn't even recognize that this is a criminal act. I find that very hard to believe. I'm not in law enforcement, but I think, and I think a lot of people right here understand what a criminal act looks like. It's when you take somebody's property and use it for your own without permission. That's definitely it. Someone here has to be held accountable. Someone will not be working here sometime in the near future. So, I think you suspended these guys, but they're coming back to work. We need to have the details. They need to all be laid out in the public. We need to know what really happened. And right now, I'm going to call for Mr. Gaultier and Mr. Spees's resignations. Then the last item, well, that's it. That's good enough. Thank you very much.
Sure, yeah, let him go.
Next, Mr. Howe.
Tom Howe. My comment is in reference to the package that you put out every meeting. And it references an incident that happened in September. Quote, this is directly from your agenda package. The meeting will be livestreamed via YouTube. The September meeting, I couldn't hear. There's nothing wrong with my hearing. But the fact is, the people who are listening to this meeting livestreamed, they can't hear either. So, you got to do, by the law, everybody needs to talk into the mic and talk loud enough so that those people out in their homes can hear what's going on because they pay taxes, just like the people here at this meeting.
Thank you. Next, before we move to regular approvals, our solicitor will be reading a statement.
Can everyone hear me? Okay. In response to some of the opinions and statements made on the township's website page regarding the Reading Country Club incident, which occurred on October 9, 2021, the board makes the following statement, which will be included as part of the minutes to this meeting. Please be advised that on October 9, 2021, an event was booked at the Reading Country Club property as a golf outing. But the event actually held exceeded the scope of what was permitted for the type of event that was booked. The fee was paid to the township for the type of event that was booked. Because it was a booked event, it occurred at the time it was scheduled. However, since this event exceeded the scope of what was permitted for this type of event, it was in violation of township policies and regulations. The Township Board of Supervisors and Township Manager did not authorize the event to exceed the scope for which it was booked. Due to the fact that the unauthorized event was booked by an employee of the township, the unauthorized aspect of the event is a township personnel matter. The unauthorized event resulted in two consequences being triggered. The first consequence triggered is for the township to require the person who booked the event to cover all of the out-of-pocket expenses incurred by the township, including but not limited to the extra cleaning costs that were just mentioned by Mr. Hughes, and payment of the full fee for the type of event that occurred. Please be advised that the township has taken all action necessary to recover from the person who booked the event, all out-of-pocket costs and fees associated with this event. There was damage done to township property, and that damage was reported to the township's insurance carrier. The person who booked the event will be required by the township to pay for all costs resulting from damages to township property. A person who attended the event was allegedly injured during the event, and this was also reported to the township's insurance carrier. The second consequence triggered is disciplinary action by the township against the employee who booked this event and against another employee who was involved in the event but did not book the event. Because the responsible individuals are employees of the township, disciplinary action has been taken against these employees for violating township policies and regulations. Lastly, some residents questioned if liquor was served at this event and if there are violations of the township's liquor license. The township is the recipient of the liquor license and does not administer or enforce the license. The township does not have any authority to prosecute any alleged violations of the liquor laws. Jurisdiction over the liquor license is strictly within the control of the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board and not the township. However, any violations of township policies regarding the service of liquor will be dealt with and have been dealt with as a personnel matter. Any assumption in the community that the Township Board of Supervisors does not consider this incident to be a serious matter is inaccurate. Serious consequences have resulted from this matter for the responsible parties. Please be advised that the township has contacted the Pennsylvania Ethics Commission regarding this incident. The Pennsylvania Ethics Commission has agreed with how the township is handling this matter. In addition, the township has reported this incident to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control The township has taken all necessary action to respond to the events which occurred on October 9, 2021, at the Reading Country Club. Since this matter involves township personnel, the Board of Supervisors cannot offer any further comments on the disciplinary aspects of this matter.
We pay them.
Thank you.
Can we ask questions about this?
No, you cannot. We cannot comment on personnel matters. Thank you.
It's not about personnel matters.
This isn't called in as China.
Could you give us your name, please?
Excuse me?
Could you tell us your name?
My name?
Yes.
I'm Elizabeth McGovern.
Okay. Didn't recognize you. Let me ask you.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll be moving on now to regular approvals. The regular minutes, October 11th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes dated October 11th, 2021.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0 vote. Next, we have the disbursements for October 25th, 2021. Comments, questions, or a motion?
Motion to approve is written.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the disbursements.
I'll second.
Second. Comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 4-0 vote. Next, we have the Treasurer's Report, September 2021.
Make a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report dated September 2021, subject to audit. Second.
At this point, comments, questions?
Do we want to have our due presentation first or just vote?
Do this first.
Do the presentation first.
Do this, and then we'll do it.
All right. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 4-0 vote. Next, we are going to take a look at the quarterly review for the township.
It says quarterly review.
Right under Treasurer's Report, quarterly review.
Thanks.
Is it on the website?
I'm going to do a brief overview of the financials as of the end of the third quarter of 2021. There we go. First, the general fund. Revenues at the end of September were $9,668,021, which is 75% of the full year budget. Expenditures, $9,62,398, which are 71% of the full year budget. So, we have excess of revenues less expenditures of $605,000. Again, these are as of the end of September. More detail on the general fund revenues. Currently, we're tracking on budget at the 75%. Brief overview of each of the categories that we have. Engineering revenues are currently exceeding budget. We're at 105% of budget, mainly driven by plumbing, mechanical, electrical permits, which are exceeding budget by $52,000. Building permits, which exceed budget by $37,000, and road occupancy permits, which are exceeding budget by $17,000. So, good news in the engineering revenues. Parks and Recreation revenues unfortunately are behind budget. They're at 42%. That is primarily due to the fact that we had a much smaller playground program this year, so that's only at 32% of budget and will continue to be below budget. Facility rentals are picking up. We're currently at 50% of the budget, even though the rentals only opened mid-year. So, that number will increase. However, we will probably not meet our budget for that because the facilities were open for a majority of 2021. Police revenues are on pace to exceed the budget. Currently, they're at 90% of the budget, with common police fines exceeding the budget by $11,000. General revenues, they are currently at 74% of the budget. So, property taxes current year, we are at a 97% collection rate currently. Property taxes prior year and the tax claim, which is a prior year as well, we are over budget by $39,000. Transfer taxes above budget, we're at 115% of the budget, and that's due to the very active real estate market, so we're hoping that'll continue for the rest of the year. Earned income taxes on track to meet budget, we're at 79%. Business privilege taxes tracking ahead of budget, we're at 92%, so we should exceed budget in that category this year. We do have interest income and investment income, which is under budget due to the low interest rate environments, and that's going to continue to be a negative budget variance at year-end. The transfer from the reserve fund, which is budgeted at $1,007,000 this year, is contingent upon our current sewer balance collections and some insurance claims that we have out pertaining to the former ownership of the wastewater treatment plant. General fund expenditures, we are at 71% of budget. I have a note there that our annual pension contributions are made in October there in the current disbursements that you approved. Therefore, the third quarter figures are a little less than 75%. So, we have a very large expenditure that went through in this check run, so that number is going to jump up a little bit. So, administration expense, we are at 70% of budget. Of note, legal fees were at 70% of the budget, so that is tracking well. Recycling fees are at about 79% of budget, and our IT fees are at 70% of budget. Those were all categories that were over budget last year or in prior years. Engineering expenditures are tracking below budget, and that's anticipated to remain that way. Highway expenditures are slightly above budget at 83%. We have some story walk trail expenses, about $23,000, that are going to be reimbursed from the library once all the bills are in. That's through a donation that the library received for that project. Parks and Recreation expenditures are tracking below budget at 50%, again primarily due to the smaller playground program that we had this year. The police expenditures are below budget at 71%, and the categories that are mainly under budget are the professional development and the community affairs. All of the other programs are currently at budget. Any questions from the board on the general fund?
No.
Okay. I'm going to do a brief overview of the other funds that we have. Utility funds, currently excess of revenues over expenditures of $33,000. Again, those are expenses for streetlights and fire hydrants that are fully supported by tax dollars. Fire Services Funds, excess of revenues over expenditures of $273,000. Those are funds that are given, oops, sorry, primarily are given to the Exeter Township volunteer fire department, supported by tax revenues. Capital Expense Funds, we are currently at a deficit of $12,000. That just means that we've spent a little bit more of that funds than we've brought in this year. However, there's a current balance of about $313,000 in that fund. Detention Fund, excess revenues over expenditures of about $8,000, and the current balance in that account is $107,000. K-9 Fund, current balance is $17,000. Currently, we have an excess of revenues over expenditures of about $11,000. These are grants and donations that support our K-9 program. Golf Operations Funds, we have an excess of revenues over expenditures of $194,000 Clubhouse Operations Funds, we are currently in a deficit of about $350,000 for the year. That's due to the large expenditures we made in the HVAC and other building improvements over there. There's a current balance of $24,000 in that fund. Exeter Promenade Fund, currently at a deficit of revenues over expenditures. DEA Equitable Sharing Fund, this is supporting the police department. Really, only interest income in here right now. We have about $20,000 in funds we're waiting on from the DEA that'll be received sometime over the next two or three years. Current balance is about $4,700. Municipal Complex Funds, right now, we have an excess of revenues over expenditures of about $225,000 for 2021. The current balance is $466,000, and these are contributions related to the potential new municipal complex and the fire station. American Rescue Plan Act Fund, currently have excess of $1,003,000 in that fund. These are funds that we received from the federal government, and we are going to be discussing those in the budget presentation of how they can be used over the next three Capital Improvement Fund, we have a deficit of revenues less expenditures of about $594,000. The primary thing going through here right now are the improvements to Perkyomen Avenue and the grant proceeds that we received from there. The current balance is $2.6 million currently. Equipment Fund, current balance is $4,100,000. We have a deficit of revenues less expenses of $400,000 for the year. This is the fund that we buy equipment through, and any proceeds from the sale of equipment go back into this fund. Debt Service Fund, this is excess of revenues less expenditures of $20,000. This is the debt service tax that supports all of our bond issues. Apparatus Fund, currently $2,000 revenues over expenditures. This is the fund utilized to purchase fire department apparatus. The current balance is $1,00276. Wastewater Treatment Sale Proceeds Funds, there's a deficit of revenue over expenditures for the year of $2.7 million. The current balance is $44,866,569. This year, the budgeted expenditures were some stormwater basin repairs, the last bond payment on the final sewer debt that we had, an OPEB trust establishment, and a capital injection into the clubhouse operation fund. Park Improvement Fund, currently we have an excess of revenues of $285,000. The current balance is $1,006,000. We're going to be using some of these funds in 2021 and 2022 for some improvements to Pineland Park and potentially Lorraine Hollow Park. State Liquid Fuels Fund, we have an excess of revenues over expenditures of $53,000. The current balance is $145,000. These are gas tax dollars that are utilized for road improvements. And lastly, the Traffic Improvement Fund, current balance of $37,000. There's no current activity in this account other than interest income. Questions? Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Sorry, we're moving on.
We're not allowed to ask a question about the review?
No. All right, unfinished business. Approve and execute the conditional use decision for Lincolnwood Mobile Home Community. Is that you, Jeff?
Yes. We had the conditional use hearing before the Board of Supervisors. Our solicitor has drawn up the full findings of fact on this matter and the conclusion of law and the actual decision. We need the board to actually vote to approve this finding of fact so we can close out the conditional use hearing on this matter. The issue, this was just to approve the use for the mobile home park. They will still have to go through land development process and ultimately come back to the Board of Supervisors for approval of that phase of the project. This was simply the conditional use. They satisfied the requirements of that, and there were a few requirements that the board put in to require them to take care of certain items in order to get the approval.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the conditional?
Make a motion to approve and execute the conditional use decision for Lincolnwood Mobile Home Community.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 4-0 vote. New business. Discussion on PennDOT traffic detour for 2022-2023 bridge replacement project. Is that you, Joe?
No, I got it.
Clarence?
PennDOT has requested our input on this bridge replacement at 724 and 568 over in Gibraltar. What they're at, I must, I hope everybody got one of these right. It's on the back. The two options would be to run the cars over Gibraltar all the way over here to, by Burger King. The other option is to go straight through at Gibraltar onto 47th Street. The big difference is, if you come over here by Burger King, there is no left-hand turn, so traffic could start to back up. Where if they go through 47th Street, there are left-hand turn lanes, there's two of them actually. I would recommend that we go that route for the couple of months that they're going to have that detour up.
You recommend 47th Street?
Yeah. However, I told them I would talk to you guys and see what your pleasure is.
Any questions? Clarence, comments? I'm inclined to go with whatever you recommend.
It's definitely the safest way because it gives them a left turn. Where out here, they're going to always have to wait for cars that are coming across.
Joe, you looked at this as well?
Yeah, I looked at it too. I agree with Clarence. He's correct. There is no left turn at Gibraltar, and we have 47th Street. That's designed to take a lot of left turn traffic because that's pretty much one of the predominant movements at that intersection. I think it's going to be in the best interest of the township to allow that to serve as the detour route. And trucks will be utilizing 345, so it's basically just going to be cars. So, I concur with Clarence.
Change of time. We're right there.
They're only anticipating three months to do the bridge work. If for some reason it becomes longer, my suggestion would be to reach out to PennDOT to see if any type of timing change. In this situation, they might opt not to go that route because of only being three months.
Carl or Michelle, do you have anything you want to say about this?
No. It's just, but it's a three-month timeframe.
Three months, correct?
Correct, yes.
Do we need any kind of motion with this, or we just?
I would do a motion to.
Okay. Recommend option two.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we recommend using the routes that utilizes 47th Street. Does that work?
It does.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 4-0 vote.
And just for your information, this is not going to happen until '23, so.
Okay. Okay, next is a motion to accept the resignation of Assistant Township Manager.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of the Assistant Township Manager.
Comments or questions?
No.
The one comment I would make is, I appreciate all the effort that Laurie gets provided the township, particularly through COVID. She's not necessarily a technology person, but she really did a great job helping us through those situations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 4-0 vote. Next, authorized advertisement of budget meeting. It says on the agenda November 1st, but Ms. Kircher can't make it, so we're looking at November 4th.
I make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the budget meeting for November 4th, 2021, at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 4-0 vote. Next, we have authorized advertisement of requests for proposals for township auditor.
We currently are in the final year of our agreement with the Certified Public Accountant. We're requesting from the board authorization to put out the request for proposal to solicit for a new or replacement auditor for the township. This is just to authorize the advertisement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Carl, seconds. Carl seconds. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four-oh vote. Next, concierge application number four, escrow release for Pathfinder Meadows, Section Two, Phase Two, in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents.
The developer for Pathfinder Meadows requested a release of two hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Just some clarification, the developer is requesting a release of sanitary sewer items which are not covered under our escrow. That's a separate escrow with Pennsylvania American Water. I did bring that to the attention of the developer, that those items need to be directly sent to representatives of PA American for their release. Also, there were some other items that the contractor had in for extras for rock removal that's not part of our escrow as well. All the other items were done satisfactory, except for the exception of a couple swales, drainage swales that need to be addressed. However, our recommendation to the board is to release a hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars for the site work to the developer of Pathfinder Meadows, contingent upon your approval.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we release for Pathfinder Meadows, Section Two, Phase Two, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four-oh vote. Next, adopt resolution 2021-36, authorizing payments to three pension plans. Is that you, Jeff?
Oh, the pension plans, yes, I'm sorry. The allocation of the pension plans, we are required under state statute that we need to allocate the money that we receive in the state aid that we receive for the three township pension plans. The allocations are, for the police pension plan, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety cents. For the employee non-union pension plan, sixty-two thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. And for the employee union pension plan, eighty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-three and seventy-six cents. The total amount is four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents. That is the amount that we receive from the Commonwealth. Once this is approved, we need to send notification to the Auditor General that these amounts have been deposited into the respective accounts.
What numbers are he reading? Not on the agenda.
No, no, not in the check register.
Excuse me.
Hundred and eighty thousand dollar check.
These are what's on the agenda.
These, okay.
Something's on the records.
Excuse me, the amount that was listed on the agenda is the full MMO amount. I'm corrected on that. I was reading just the allocation that came from the state of Pennsylvania that must be reported back to them. The total amounts on there are for all the funds that go into the three pension plans. Out of the general fund accounts, in order to make up those amounts, for the police pension plan, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and ten cents. The employee non-union plan, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. And for the employee union pension plan, fifteen thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. If you add those amounts to the amounts that I read, the totals do add up to the numbers that are on the agenda. I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a motion to adopt this resolution, or we don't have a motion at this point. Someone want to make a motion?
I have a question.
Yes, good.
I have a question about the police pension plan, since there was so much.
Put it louder, please.
I have a question about the police pension fund, since they paid, not this board, the other board paid ten million dollars into it. Why would we still owe this?
Jen, could you answer that, please? You'd have a better explanation than I would on that.
The deposit was made into the pension plan at the end of 2019. These numbers are based upon evaluation that was done on January 1st, effective January 1st, 2019. A new valuation is done every year, so we had another one done as of January 1st, 2021, which will affect the payment in 2022. The 2021 valuation reflects the deposit that was done at the end of 2019, so it is a two-year delay.
Okay.
Okay? Does that make sense? So these are still based upon an old valuation, which is how it works.
Thank you. Any other questions? Did we make a motion on this? I've lost my train of thought now. No, no. All right, does someone, all right, does someone want to make a motion with this?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-36, authorizing payments.
Can I hear you to talk directly into the mic?
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Motion to accept Resolution Number 2021-36, authorizing payments to the three pension plans.
I'll second the motion. Any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four-oh vote. Next, we have a motion ratifying the Board of Supervisors' response to the Exeter Township Police Officers Association Step Two grievance. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four-oh vote. Next, Department reports. Highway Department.
All right. Getting ready for leaf collection, something that everybody always seems to love here in the township. So that will be starting here in another week. We also doing some tree trimming right now, finishing up the highway mowing. And also, just like to report as far as the Parks Department, Saturday night, we had the Halloween parade out here, going through the garage. It was a huge success, somewhere around 300 cars, I guess. Kids loved it, and everybody had a lot of fun, so it was a good time for all.
Thank you. Joe, engineer?
Just one item, an update on our Gibraltar Road Bridge Replacement Project and Shellborne Road Intersection Approvements. Today, myself and the township staff attended a Zoom conference just to discuss some small items of drainage. However, Borton Lawson, the PennDOT consultant, did bring, provided us an update on the project. They're looking at letting bids for the project next year, April and May of 2022, with construction to start in February of 2023. And the reason for that lag in time is because of materials. It's very difficult to get materials. Traffic signal poles are taken almost a half a year, a little bit lessed, because it's with the Steel Act, there's only one company, I believe, in Texas that provides the mast arms and poles. So there's a lag in time getting those fabricated and delivered on-site. PennDOT felt as though if they delayed it, then the project could be possibly completed in one construction season, so we are dealing with Shellborne being closed for that temporary period of time in the summer, so we're avoiding the school season, so hopefully everything will take place. But right now, that's the tentative schedule for the project. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Joe?
No.
Thank you. Next, chief.
Just a few things. Police Department applied for a grant and received a grant for five thousand dollars for ballistic vest, or bulletproof vest, as they're called. So I'm glad to see that, to offset the cost for those vests for officers. Just a reminder, trick-or-treat is coming up on us, so as you're out there driving, please be careful when driving a vehicle. Make sure you're on alert for excited children, whose vision might be obscured by masks, who might be running out in traffic. Please inspect any candy before allowing the kids to eat it, and discard any homemade or unwrapped treats. Make sure you go through the bags thoroughly and check them, please. We also like to congratulate Officer Kurt Undercoffer on his recent retirement. Officer Undercoffer's professionalism, friendship, and positive disposition will be missed by many in the Police Department. His 30 years of service to the township is a notable achievement, and we wish him the best in his future endeavors and a healthy and long retirement. The Police Department also took part in Operation Safe Stop in order to keep children safe from motorists who illegally pass school buses or in the process of unloading students and picking up students. Officers followed school buses and stopped offenders for violating school bus stopping laws. So it was, again, a good event that officers took part in. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Solicitors' report?
I have nothing.
Township managers' report?
Yeah, I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Clarence mentioned, the Halloween drive-through, and I want to put a big shout-out to Clarence, Larry, and our Public Works crew for helping set up and work the event. Students from the High School Emergency Service Club helped fill all the candy bags. We want to thank all our sponsors, Unique Pretzels, Godiva Candy, Deaf and Boba Chips, Chick-fil-A, Palmer Candy, Tom Sturgis and Red Robin. We really want to appreciate your generous donations. Again, thank you to the Exeter Township Police and Fire Departments. They handed out items to the kids and talked with the families. The Alliance Club was involved, and our fire police helped with the traffic directing. We had 273 cars actually go through the drive-through. We approximated approximately 550 kids, based on the amount of candy that was given out the bags. So about 1,100 people in total enjoyed the event. We got a lot of very good comments from the public out there, and we really appreciate all the volunteers, the township staff who volunteered their time to come here and dress up in costumes and participate. And just to let everyone know, the next planned event of this type will be the Festival of Lights on Saturday, December 4th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Redding Country Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment, non-agenda items. Fred Whitehawk.
Fred Whitehawk, West 47th Street. My wife actually wrote this. She can't talk loud, so she asked me to read it for her. I don't have a degree giving me initials behind my name such as BA, MD, or PhD. What I do have is common sense and the ability to recognize BS when it's handed out. I've collected a bag full of it. There's too many to mention here tonight, and I'm not going to waste my time going over them to a board who has shown their lack of interest into what we have to say, or the courtesy of answering our questions. A reminder of, ask me no questions, I'll tell you no lies. My dad always told me, if it's working, don't mess with it. If it isn't working, then fix it. This isn't working and needs to be fixed. Election Day is November 2nd. I urge everyone to get out and vote. If you feel comfortable with the way things are going, then vote to keep it that way. If you feel there's a need for change, then vote for that change. There will never be a board to please us all. I will tell you this, though, no matter the outcome of this election, my eye will be on all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mary Gardella.
Hello, my name is Mary Gardella. I'm Pennsylvania Drive. I'm here tonight to speak about the issues over at the country club, and what does it mean to embezzle? And here is a definition from Merriam-Webster. It's a transitive verb, means to appropriate something such as property entrusted to one's care fraudently to one's own use. It's almost impossible to believe that a wedding involving a family in this community with over 200 guests is simply an unauthorized event. This type of gathering takes typically months to plan, and requires identifying the date, the ceremony, the reception, the venue, communicating to potential guests, photographers, florists, caterers, everyone to show up. There are many more other steps, and some of these may be at different in the age of social media, but to schedule an event in a space that is closed to the public must require even more. Each of these steps would involve identifying the location for both the ceremony and for the reception. We need all of those involved to come forward and provide full disclosure to our community. It's obvious that many people in this community knew about this event for a long time. I find it absolutely insulting for this board to continue to characterize this as merely an unauthorized event. Given how it has been handled, I believe it should be investigated by outside law enforcement agencies, and truly hope that the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board has been contacted for any regulatory violations. I believe that Mr. Ahrens, as an employee of this township, should be required to appear before the board and public and give a full accounting of all the plans for the event and how it was sold as a golfing event. And full disclosure of any township employees or administrators who are invited to attend this unauthorized event. Exeter Township's residents deserve more. We deserve a full investigation and transparency to be provided to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, John Snellinger.
Well, it's second Tuesday, second Monday again, so I must be here to talk about the University Rifle Club. There's no new information to share, so, and I know there's a lot of issues to deal with, but there's nothing more important than protecting the public safety. You all have to remember that on July 4th, a 50-caliber bullet left that gun club, and it missed the head of a 10-year-old boy by three feet. Please don't forget that. This past Sunday was a typical day with shooters on three different ranges at the same time, and I estimate between 2,000 and 3,000 rounds were fired in six hours, including some short automatic bursts of weapons. They couldn't do this five years ago because they didn't have all these ranges. They redesigned and rebuilt this club in 20, between 2014 and 2016, and I believe that as soon as they did that, the University Rifle Club began, they gave up their protection of their grandfathered special exemption. I've talked this over with lawyers and business owners and zoning officers from other townships, and they all agree. If they can't provide documentation about the safety of their new range design, they should be shut down until they can, until they can prove that the new ranges are safe, and if not, they should be forced to reconfigure their gun club. One other small thing I'd like to mention, the township, regarding the township ordinances that regulate the discharge of firearms, Exeter Township ordinances are obsolete in this area, and they should be updated. Exeter regulates the discharge of air rifles and BB guns, but they don't regulate automatic or semi-automatic rifles. I'm talking about the discharge, not the right to own them, but the discharge of these weapons within the township. I recommend, it's kind of hard to regulate all the different types of weapons, so I recommend that the township take a one-pull, one-shot approach to regulating weapons fire. In other words, you pull the trigger once, you get one shot. That's all that should be allowed outdoors in a suburban township very close to homes and schools and churches. So that's my statement for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, David Hughes.
The Redding Country Club and the corruption in this township continues to go on. I don't buy the excuse that you've given us, because the clubhouse has been closed for four years, and all of a sudden, you mentioned your golf outings. Yes, many golf outings have occurred there for you and you, for your golfing, without permission, and I don't think we ever got paid for it, because there's no revenue showing up on the clubhouse fund. There's no revenue. So I don't believe what you're telling us. I don't believe it at all. And these guys just weren't employees, they were management. There was the superintendent and the Redding Country Club manager. And you're talking about getting reimbursed for expenses? Last time I looked, we were running this for profit. Where's the profit? I don't hear that word. I don't hear that word. So we know that you guys have been using it for your golf, the ERCCP. We know the president of the ERCCP works in the pro shop. I think what we're looking at here is not only corruption, but total incompetence. And I don't know if you really self-reported yourself to the Ethics Commission or not. I'm going to call Caruso. I'll find out if you did. I think that we need to still, us, we out here in the public, we need to file complaints about this because it just smells to high heaven. And we're going to get to the bottom of this, one way or the other. And someone should lose their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Edward. I can't read the last name. No? Okay. Next, Mr. Howell.
Tom Howell, Exeter Township. I will quote directly from the document that elected and appointed people in Exeter Township have sworn to uphold. This is from the Pennsylvania Constitution. This is subsection two, and the title is "Political Powers." "All power is inherited in the people," comma. That's us out here, not those people up front. "And all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness." A lot of us aren't happy, even if we go to McDonald's and get a Happy Meal. "For the advancement of these ends, they have at all times," that's all times, "an inalienable and indefeasable right to alter, reform, or abolish their government in such a manner as they may think proper." You can do this on November the 2nd, and we can do it after that also. Quoting from an article in the New York Times regarding the Supreme Court case, New York Times versus Sullivan. In that article, it says, "The First Amendment emboldens a profound national commitment to the principles that debate on public issues like the country club, like the sewer sale, shall be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include caustic and sometimes unpleasurable sharp attacks on government and public officials." We have the right because of the de facto law on money. We send money to these people, and they don't spend it correctly. The group of people, Greg Artieri, Dave Spees, Jack Pyho, and Carl Staples. It's my opinion they are connected to a phrase that we haven't heard in a long time. And this is in reference to both the appointment of Carl Staples and the fact that Carl Staples is running for supervisor. That statement isn't, you shouldn't bite the hand that feeds you, even though that might apply. The phrase is catch 22. November 1st, Carl Staples will be a supervisor. November the 3rd, he'll still be a supervisor, no matter what happens in the election. If he wins or if he loses, he's still a supervisor. The three supervisors took the vote, in my opinion, out of the public's hands, and they have disregarded the great government and the great documents of the United States, the United States Constitution and the Pennsylvania Constitution. The other thing is the sunshine law. I'll paraphrase the second portion of the sunshine law. It says that secrecy in government is bad for the public. Why haven't we have a budget minutes for October the 4th, I think it was? In the past, we had minutes for that meeting. The public is not getting the information, the government is not transparent, needs to be voted out on November the 2nd. Some of you have read the email that Greg Artieri sent out. My opinion, you'll never find this to be approved by God. This was approved by the devil. If you go to the Constitution and you look up elections, I'll paraphrase what it says, the election is supposed to be equal and fair, and then there's a punctuation mark after that statement. I don't believe this email makes the election fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have supervisor reports. Ms. Kurcher.
I just want to remind everyone to make sure that they get out and vote. It's really important in this election. And hopefully I'll see you at the polls. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Staples.
I would just like to say that the first week of being a supervisor has been...
You need to talk into the mic.
I would like to say the first week of being a supervisor has been challenging, to say the least. But I believe it's all about staying together and not fighting each other. So let's work on civility and working together. Thank you. And the truth. For all.
Thank you. Mr. Spees.
Thank you. Yeah, just...
Excuse me. Excuse me. We don't need this, we don't need the swearing.
Yeah, we do. You're a liar.
Go ahead, Mr. Spees.
Just want to welcome Carl to the board and also welcome, or wish...
Enough. If you cannot stop interrupting him, you'll need to leave. If he says one more word, he leaves. Go ahead, take him.
So I just wanted to welcome Carl to the board. Welcome Carl. And wish Jack well. I think Jack had some medical issues, and hopefully he has a speedy recovery, so wish him well.
Okay, thank you. My comments, I just want to thank Lori Gutz again for the work she did for the township. She's done an outstanding job, and she'll be missed. Want to congratulate Officer Undercoffer on his retirement, and also the Parks Rec Department and Highway Department on a good event. And welcome Mr. Staples to the board. At this point, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four oh vote. Thank you. Good night.